It is now time to call this meeting to order. I welcome any visitors. Thank you for coming, any media who might be here. I also like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones for the courtesy of all in here and without interruption. We will begin the meeting with an invitation from Mr. Charles Chandler.
You wouldn't move your hands, let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this day and thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for the good rainy season you've given us for our farmers that the crops might grow. We thank you for our federal staff, our president, and congress and senators. We pray you bless them. Pray for our state government, our city government, and our county government. We pray, Father, as we meet tonight, we'll make decisions that would honor you, that would be fair for all concerned. We pray for those who are sick, pray especially for Jeff as he recovers from surgery, and others in our community who are fighting severe medical issues. We love you and praise you in Jesus' name, amen. If you'd stand and salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to begin this meeting with a reminder for those of you who've been here before, and some of you that are new, that we have a time clock. If you look to your right, you'll see that each side, each of your sides, will have a total of 10 minutes to present. It's on, it's still... Now, it gets better now? It keeps going in and out. You'll have 10 minutes per side to present your side of the agenda. So, the time clock will run. So, if there are several of you signed up to speak, just think about the person behind you who might want to say something, or if you've got several who are in agreement, you can have them stand up and we'll know just exactly who is for or against an item on the agenda. And we thank you. We will begin the meeting with the approval or the amendment of the minutes from the last meeting. Got a motion for Mr. Lane to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Brandon. All those in favor? Minutes are approved as written. Item number one on the agenda. Turtle Landing Investments LLC has applied to rezone 71.17 acres from Ag 5, which is five-acre agricultural, to R80, a residential 80,000 square feet, for the purpose of creating a subdivision. The property is located on Sinkhole Road and Ephesus Church Road. John Spandl will be acting as agent. And I'll interject here, this is a rezone request. Planning and zoning is a recommendation board for rezones. So, we will make a recommendation to the county commissioners, and a final determination will be present here in this room on July 1st at 5:30. Mr. John Spandl will be acting as the agent. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, this rezone request is located for the general area of the star shown on the map, southeast, southwest of Bullock County, near the Evans County line. This is the zoning map for the property. The rezone request involves truly three parcels, Ephesus Church Road, the north portion, and then Sinkhole Road, which is a county-maintained dirt road, which borders most of the eastern boundary of the parcel. But as you see, the zoning for the property and area properties is currently Ag 5. And this is an aerial for the property that's being for consideration. And this is the sketch plan that was provided by the applicant. I'll just point out that it does, the applicant intends to have access roads onto Sinkhole Road, which is, again, a county-maintained dirt road. So, we've suggested a condition that would require one access point onto the county-maintained paved road on the north portion, Ephesus Church Road, where all lots would access into the interior road for the property. This is the property as it, in its current state. At the time we placed the zoning notice, or the sign for the zoning notice, again, along Sinkhole Road. And we'll get back to the site map. And then, I'll point out that staff recommends conditions if the approval is granted, and those conditions are in the staff report. And one issue staff brought up was that the distance from the closest fire station is beyond five miles, so there is an increased response time for the fire department with this development.
All right, Mr. Spandl? All right, you may go forward.
We're planning to develop this into an upscale subdivision with the 80,000 square foot lots. We realize we'll have interior roads, we're prepared to do that. We'll have water systems, we'll have it all there. It should be, when it's gonna be, we'll develop in stages. It won't all be done at one time. We start Phase 1, 2, 3, and 4 to make it work. We're right near I-16 and 301 where all the plants are. There's a strong demand for housing in that area, and we would like to provide a lot of that housing for the area. But it would be a beautiful place. It's good upland soil. You know, we don't have to worry about swamps and things like this, so it's a good place to work with. We're pretty excited about getting to it. So, you do? Any questions?
Okay, there may be some questions for you, and we'll probably call you back up after we've got several who want to speak, and there may be some questions for you. Thank you, sir. All right. Now, we have about, 1, 2, 3, 4, 6 people signed up to speak, so remember your time limit. Judy McCorkle? Or you can get to Gary, all right, Mr. Gary McCorkle.
Oh, I have some paperwork you'd like to give to the members here? The paperwork you have in front of you, ladies and gentlemen, is some high points from some stuff we have, some questions about, concerns about for this area, rezoning, of course, especially the impact of transforming rural farmland with little or no impact on the community to a high-density area that we think will be significant, especially since Ephesus Church Road is a small, narrow paved road that runs into an unpaved road. Some points in this plan, I'm kinda, kinda limited, I know, in time, but some of the major points in this plan, from the Smart Bullock 2045 Plan, is supposed to protect property rights while supporting economic development and preserving agriculture, land and agriculture as a cornerstone of our economy, encouraging development to be tied to the historic and rural character of the area. As physical development continues with protecting population growth, agriculture and farmland that we know is gradually declining. And these public utility services, we kinda mentioned a few minutes ago, is limited in rural areas. Public safety services, especially in medical response, are influenced by great distances. Water service is limited, and sewer treatments are generally limited to septic tanks, both on-site. In referring to our Bullock County Department review that we spoke of a few minutes ago, it says the zoning patterns as consistency has a negative impact. That's your own words and your findings here. Bullock County Review said the development does not appear to conform with suggested land use policy. The Bullock County Review says the department will have a negative impact on the southeast Bullock High School feeder system. The water sewer impact, I know it says that the private-owned community system will be required. Our view is that a required water system will have a negative impact on the homes and well systems around there and the surrounding farming operations. As far as environmental impact, the Bullock County Department of View said it'd be neutral, but I feel like would increase artificial light pollution, though you can read about on the internet if you will. It would negatively affect the people in the area and the circadian rhythm of the people that are close to this or development. Traffic and road damage structure, of course, is, says it's a neutral impact, but we believe the substantial increase in traffic will have a negative impact on the area, especially with the handicap warning signs on Ephesus Church Road. And Ephesus Church Road is only paved on one end, so response time and other things coming down the dirt road from the other end, according to where you at, would be a problem. The request is zoning also of Bullock-Sinkhole Road. We talked about it being a dirt road and limited access, but they recommend we come and only fund the Ephesus Church Road property. Another thing with law enforcement impact, Bullock County Review states that negative impacts ensures departments already seize capacity. EMS and fire services say those responsible, response time will be inadequate. The NRPA level of service, the public park space, does not propose a common area for passive parks, so there's a negative impact. This is just some of the points we had to make, a different situation we had. We had 67 people in front of you that you have petitioned there from the people in this area, that live in this area, that pay tax their whole lives, that do not support this rezoning. And that's kinda where we are. And anybody that's supporting this action in the crowd, please stand up. Anybody?
Decline?
Decline? Okay. Decline, is that... Okay, I knew there was about 10, 10 of us after 67 has come today. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCorkle. All right, Amanda Klingel, how do you...
Klingel.
Klingel, Amanda Klingel, okay.
Thank you. I agree with everything you said. Thank you for that. My biggest concern that I've been thinking about is not only fire, EMS, just the safety of folks. When hurricanes come, we are the first to lose power and we are the last to get it back. We had homes... Ms. K, y'all were out for what, a week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. We were out. Some people out there, because we're at the end of the line. We're right there at the county. There are just not a lot of people there, so we're at the end. So, with bringing the subdivision in, how is that gonna put a strain on EMC? And not only that, you know, we moved out to the county, we've been here our whole lives, and we moved out to the county for that life. If we wanted a subdivision, we would've stayed where we were, but we wanted, wanted the small feel of community where our neighbors could drive up in our yard and talk to us about things. So, I would just say, for the recommendation, just think about how it's gonna impact negatively. And also, in response to the report, I read that there were no positives identified. It was all negative or neutral. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Kay Anderson?
I've been here for 50 years. I've been educated for 37 years, and it's Ag 5 for a reason. It's for agriculture. It's not for residential. In your code, it says, "The statement of this purpose of Ag 5 is to preserve it for agriculture, not for residential, not for anything else. It's to preserve a way of life, and so all you people can eat, like wear clothes. You don't wanna go naked. You don't wanna go naked. You might wanna let us grow some cotton." The schools, the nearby schools cannot accommodate the influx. It cannot. Ephesus Church Road and Sinkhole Road are one of the first roads to flood when we have a whole bunch of rain. If we don't have a whole lot of rain, then you're talking about the aquifers that will be sucked up by people that don't live out there, have not grown up out there, and our farmers will suffer, and our children will suffer. It's gonna be a mess. There's no easy access except for 301. 301 is a mess in the mornings and in the afternoons because of the truck stop that's moved in. When all the development on Union Church Road comes in, it's gonna be a cluster. It's gonna be dangerous. It already is. You can't drive down 301 without big trucks pulling out in front of you. So, you're gonna add to that. That doesn't even make sense. With all due respect to the development, we don't live out there so you can make money. You know what I mean? This is our livelihood. My children are sixth-generation farmers. Those back there, fifth and sixth-generation farmers. We're already seeing stuff that's been torn up and distributed leave us alone. Please, let us live our lives like we wanna live them because we moved out there for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Garrett Sowell?
So, I don't live directly in the area, but Judy and Gary McCorkle are my in-laws, my wonderful in-laws. I'm only a six-year resident of Bullock County, but I have seen in the last six years since moving to the Cleto area, the influx of the subdivisions and traffic in the county. To be honest with you, not keeping up with the infrastructure that's needed. My in-laws have made it known that they wish to leave us some of their property and things later on in life, so I will be inheriting things out there, and I'd like to preserve the country feel, the, you know, the country life out there. My children may live out there one day, so I'd like to preserve that as they plan to leave it to me and my wife. And also, I'm concerned about my in-law's well-being. They have a special-needs son in them as well, and I don't want that phone call. They've been run over because the infrastructure's not adequate out there. Also, trash. I've been to many places, helped my father-in-law take off trash. Mine, I believe that's also a big thing that the county has got to address, and I've seen that decline. And without a proper plan for that, I can only see it declining as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jeremy Anderson?
Hi, I live off Ephesus Church Road. My family's been out there about eight generations, along with some of the other ones. Unbridled growth is not inevitable. There's no need to do any rubber stamp on anything that comes down the pipe. As some have already said, continued growth always leads to higher taxes, and then that feeds on itself, one thing after another. Again, the I-16, 301, traffic is a conveyor of tractor-trailers now. It was never like that. No red lights, just waiting for somebody to get, to get killed at the, at the intersection. And I was in law enforcement as a civilian crime scene investigator, and I guarantee you, as you increase high-density areas, as you continue unbridled growth, you will see more crime, period. And the last point I want to make is that it is a rural culture. Many people come out to live there, whether it be commercial farmers, homesteads, or just nice country estates. And that's what we would like to continue to build that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spandl, would you like to come back up and answer some questions, or you've got some more time? And there may be some questions from this board.
I do understand about farmland. I know all about it. We didn't bring the Hyundai plant in here. It came in on top of us. There are people here who need a place to live. We were trying to provide that for people. You know, the land was for sale for a long time. Anybody in this room that's complaining had the opportunity to have purchased it. They could've farmed it, they could've done anything they wanted to do with it, but they didn't. But my clients purchased it, and therefore, we feel like that we can do this. It's not a high-density subdivision. There will be a water system in. We will have interior roads to take care of it. I do understand that residential use is not gonna be a great drain on Floridian aquifer. You know, the Hyundai plant's a great drain on it, but this is not. You know, we have certainly, I have irrigation wells. I understand how it works. I know all about it. But I know that we're planning to build a very, develop a very nice subdivision with nice homes, bring good people in. You know, I know that there's a new fire station that's gonna be built on Union Church Road, which puts it very close to this. I've been told that. I feel like that it's an excellent location for what we're trying to do. We're certainly not trying to bother anybody there. You know, it's a unique piece of land. I don't, I think it's a great opportunity for people to have a nice place to live, is what I think. That's what we're looking at.
I have one question for the county. A fire station on Union Church Road, what timeframe are we looking at? Is that the case?
I have no, I have no knowledge of that. I'm not saying this is not right. Without the fire department here, I can confidently say of any time.
I was told that in the preliminary meeting by the fire chief.
Okay.
You know.
There may be some questions from this board? Gentlemen, ladies?
But if you want my best guess on timing, I think the next station after, I just got done with Cleto Road, there's possibly some federal funding for a fire station down on 119 in Eldora, but that's probably a few years away anyways. So, this, I think this would certainly be after that one.
But obviously, we're not that far away from the fire station.
Might you, if this was to recommend approval, might you have a pathway for fire, since there is an increased time for fire and emergency vehicles to get there? Is there anything that you can do with your water system that will enable?
We will have a water system to provide enough water for supplemental water for fire trucks. We will have that volume of water there, yes.
All right.
If that's your question.
And that's a question. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
All right, anyone else have a question?
What kind of water system do I have? It's being developed right now. We haven't pulled the trigger on it because we're trying to get rezoned. But we'll have ample wells to provide it.
It would require two 6-inch wells?
Yeah. Oh, I know it would, yes. But I'm not, I'm not the well person. I don't design wells.
It's 500 gallons a minute with 20 PSI. Same pressure.
I suspect right now, we'll probably have four 6-inch wells on that property.
But I think in light of any of the fire issues, this board might consider a recommendation of increasing the fire flows to 1,000 gallons a minute. That would give you adequate supply for a fire truck. I'm not sure 500 gallons per minute is necessarily what the fire department wants, but that's what they have. If you increase the fire flow requirement by condition, you know, that's a little better.
And you see the two conditions that have been added to this? Have you read them, or can you, do you agree to the two conditions?
The 1,000 gallons per minute will not be a problem with a water system. Now, understand, this is going in in phases. They won't all be started building at one time. You follow what I'm saying?
Yes, sir, but I'm asking you about the staff recommendations. There are two conditions on the recommendation. Have you read those, and do you understand? All structures must be site-built, conventional construction, according to state minimum requirements?
There are covenants on that property. They have to be site-built homes. No metal buildings, no mobile homes, nothing like that.
And you agree to the exit and entrance to Ephesus Church Road only?
Oh, yeah, that's, we planned on that. That would have, that would be done.
All right. Gentlemen, ladies?
If I might ask the board, in light of the recommended condition where no access on Sinkhole Road would be allowed, you know, the rezoning portion, as shown on the sketch plan, on the eastern portion of Sinkhole Road, I think you'd probably have to also make a recommendation that only a portion of the property be rezoned, just to include the western portion.
What's wrong with the southern, southeastern portion of Sinkhole Road? There's like, there would be like five homes on it. What's wrong with that? It's a good dirt road. I live on a dirt road.
So, if it stayed dirt road, then I think the county would support leaving those lots as Ag 5, and then what accesses interior subdivision roads, that'd be part of the R80.
That would take a redrawing of the sketch plan, have to be resubmitted?
Correct.
I don't understand.
I mean, I guess if...
I don't understand your reasoning for, if you have five homes on Sinkhole Road, what the problem would be in accessing them. It's only 200 yards off Ephesus Pave Road.
Well, if it's no more than five, but after five, you'd have to pave it, so... That's the reason.
Say that again?
If you put five homes on that Sinkhole Road, or as it's presented currently...
Yeah.
Sinkhole Road would need to be paved.
Well, probably right now, with the home on basically two acres, we'd have three homes on it.
I mean, three houses off of Sinkhole, I mean, that's, it's hard to tell, and we'll ask for a better site plan, but, I mean, if it's just no more than five on the right side of the property, on the right side of Sinkhole...
No, they definitely...
I mean, that's for the board to decide.
There'll be, I can pretty much guarantee you, there's only room for three. There's some wetland in the bottom that we will not develop.
Would you be adverse to us asking you to come back before us next month with a little more explicit site plan?
Yeah.
Are you under a time limit?
I can definitely do that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion of recommendation.
We have a motion to ask questions.
Outside after the meeting.
Okay. I didn't know the protocol.
I make a motion to recommend denial to the county commissioners.
I've got a motion to recommend denial. Second, for Mr. Lane, all those in favor? We're gonna recommend denial to the county commissioners, but you've got three weeks, to maybe tweak it a little bit, to present it to the county commissioners on July 1st.
So, I can still go before the county commissioners?
Yes, you still will go before the county commissioners.
Okay.
And you've got, you've got some time to do some, you know, tweaking. Thank you, sir.
I'd also try to meet with the labor...
Yeah, yeah, it might be a good idea to meet with the community and work out some Item number two on the agenda. Michael Mallard has applied to rezone 24.4 acres from Ag 5, again, to R80, for the purpose of creating a single-family subdivision. The property is located on Cleto Road, and Mr. Mallard will be acting as agent. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, you are here. I didn't see you for a second. All right, Mr. Mallard is here to represent the case. As stated by Madam Chair, Mr. Mallard is requesting a rezone for 24.4 acres, which would allow for 80,000 square foot minimum lot size, or 80. Approximate location is shown on the map here, on Cleto Road, kind of northeast area of Bullock County. This is the current zoning map. This is the current zoning map for the property and surrounding area. The applicant does own the property to the south of this, of this parcel, the R-80 across Cleto Road, on which he does have five units, one on, one for two acres. And I think this, that's kind of similar type of development that he's wanting to The aerial here does not show the, the current houses in place. There are, I believe, four houses total in place in this development. So in the staff report, we did make a consideration of how many houses were already built versus how many additional houses we would be adding to the area. And the houses were able to be built just based on Ag 5 lot requirements and being able to use a flag lot design for the lots. But the location of the houses as, as currently built would be incorporated into the subdivision. And this is the sketch plan that was provided by the applicant. It's showing nine lots, but really, the eight lots would be accessing onto the interior subdivision road, which the applicant has stated that he would keep the road private. He'd have to have a gated access way and have, you know, either a maintenance agreement or he would own the road himself and act as HOA for the maintenance of the road.
Would we need to add that to condition? That private, agreed to keep it private?
Um, I mean, not that we'd necessarily have to add it as a condition, I guess.
Or?
It would, it would be built to county standard, so it would.
Okay.
In the future, if he wanted to bring it into the county network, it would have to be, you know, we would go through that process.
At that point in time, all right.
Put it to standard.
It's item number one on the conditions.
Yeah, but it's, it's just maintain it privately, we're not keeping it.
And then the property is shown here, those are two of the homes that, two of the four that I've mentioned previously. And we'll go back to the site plan. With that, we recommend approval of the request with two conditions. That off over to you, Madam Chair.
Hello. Yeah, I just want to build a few more houses here. Everybody's always asking me, when are you going to start another house? Because there's so much need for housing in Bullock County. These nice fitters have come around and there's not enough places for, for their employees. And they run out really fast and just, as James says, they're really nice houses. You see, you saw the pictures of the houses. I'm, I've already got woods paving to give me a prize on paving that road and the little roundabout. So it'll be done before, you know, whenever this needs to be done, it'll just get done. I build these houses by myself, so it's going to take me four or five years to get these houses built, so.
Well, there may be some questions for you. There are three people signed up to speak, so.
Okay.
If you'd be willing to come back up and answer some of the questions.
And I supply, and I supply all the water to these houses and the septic and everything. I do everything myself.
All right. We'll ask you to come back up in a few minutes, then. Mr. Dean Roberts?
No speaker now, so. I live directly across from this field where he's wanting to build these houses. I've been opposed of it because, number one, from what I've seen from the ones he's already built, I don't think it's good for our community out there at all. The appearance of, anything about them, to be honest with you, it's, they don't fit the, the surroundings as far as any houses along that whole road anywhere. And I was, I was wondering, that, that growth zone y'all talk about, where, where does that go to?
That's part of the comprehensive land use plan? Is this within?
This, this location, I'll go back to the map, it's in the open rural space character area.
If you can look, you'll see it on the map.
So it's low-density development typically, well, as policy suggests, Ag 5 or R-80.
Well, the, I guess the biggest thing that bothers me is they're rental homes and you just don't know whoever's coming in. I've already had trouble, trouble with people trespassing and it's just, I work every day and I don't want to have to worry about going home. And I've been working for 25 years to get what I got there, and I want to take care of it. And it bothers me a lot to see what's happening all around, to be honest.
All right, we thank you, sir. Anything else you'd like to add? If not, we'll call up Mr. Stephen Sowell.
I'm geared.
Oh, geared.
Sorry. All right, so this one's a lot closer to home. I live at the end of TH Lee Road, approximately two, three miles from this development that is proposed. I don't believe we need any more homes in the area. You've already got Rexford being developed right at the end of my road. That's going to be hundreds of houses. It's huge. They have Silverleaf that's in the works that I've actively fought against as well that will be coming down TH Lee Road. I don't think we need any more development in the Cleto Road. The infrastructure can't support it. I drive that road every day. The traffic has severely increased. It's a thoroughfare from the Brooklyn area towards, towards 25 to Millin. There's a lot of commercial traffic and non, just folks commuting to work every day. The infrastructure out there, every time I go to the dump, it's overflowing. It's not kept up with. These houses that are already there, I agree with Mr. Roberts, they're kind of an eyesore. And we don't need more rental homes. Rental homes don't build wealth in the community. They build wealth for one individual. And if they're not going to be taken care of any better than they are, and they're not going to build wealth for families, I don't agree with it. I plan, I bought 17 acres so nobody would move up against me. Currently, I live in a module, a mobile home, and I have house plans that I plan to build down TH Lee Road. And I don't want my tax base to go up just because somebody wants to put rental homes. And that's already a problem in our county. To keep up with the current county budget, we're having to increase millage rates, home valuations. So I'm, I'm against this for multiple reasons. In your departmental review, the only positive is the land use planning. Solid waste is neutral. I disagree. I think it's negative. The traffic in roads is neutral. I disagree. It barely keeps up with the traffic now. It's dangerous. And law enforcement is not a, not a positive here either. So don't have a whole lot of positive things in light to support this. And like I said, too, we already have multiple subdivisions in the works, and I think we'll have plenty of space for folks to live. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we have Ms. Mary Jones.
Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. I've lived here a long time, just retired from 43 years of teaching, and I guess it took me probably about three years to find the perfect place that I wanted to retire. And it just happens to be next door, on the same side of the road. And I'm a single person, and I'm not sure that I would feel safe with rental people and properties coming in and out. And I agree with both gentlemen that it's, it's not well-kept and it's, they're not, they're more like just, I don't want to be disrespectful to Mr. Mallard, but they're, they're just not very, I'll just leave it at that. But, yeah, I, I do want to build out there and feel safe. And so I did buy 20 acres right next to it. So I would appreciate anything you could do to keep it safe out there.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Mallard, would you like to come up? You've got some time left that you can respond to some of these questions and comments?
Yeah, I just want y'all to understand that I live here too now. This is, it's not, it's not unclean. There's, I don't allow trash to be piled up around these houses. These are all my houses. I build them, and I'd like to say I live, I don't know if you can tell, there's a pond right there. You see that pond? That's my house, right there on that little pond. So I live right there. These are all going to be my neighbors as well. So it's not going to be.
Are there any questions from this board for Mr. Mallard?
You all saw the land across the road.
10 acres. That, you see that R-80?
Yeah.
All right, that's mine.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to deny.
Got a motion to recommend denial. Is there a second for Ms. Reiner? All those in favor of denial? All right, this will go to the county commissioners, July 1st. And again, you've got time to talk to some community members and see if y'all can iron out some questions. Thank you, sir. Item number three on the agenda. Beverly Kennedy has applied to rezone 6.07 acres from Ag 5 to R-80 for the purpose of subdividing an existing parcel into two separate parcels. The property is located at 1584 Old River Road South. Ms. Kennedy will be acting as agent when she comes up. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This rezon request is, I guess, the intent as shown in the letter, the letter by the applicant is to divide the property into one additional lot. So you have one four-acre lot and one two-acre lot. Location, as you see, is on southeast, southeast corner of Bullock County, on Old River Road South. And this is a property and surrounding properties currently zoned Ag 5 as well as adjacent parcels are Ag 5. This is, you know, one of the rural areas of the county, and the only way to really split it out is to either have, you know, and not be a family member, is to rezone it down to the R-80, which, again, would be one house on two acres. That's the aerial photo, aerial photo, one single-family structure on the property, and there would be one additional. Again, that's shown how, how it would be divided. So staff viewed this with, really, as far as impacts to any of the typical concerns of a group subdivision, not, not really any concern there. Of course, the board could always recommend rezoning just the two-acre portion, and that way you'd keep the other, other part, so you couldn't divert, divide it a third time, but that's always an option for you as well. But with that, staff recommends approval of the request without conditions, so just a regular rezon.
All right, Ms. Kennedy?
I just want to build, let my friend build a small house beside me. She helped me when my dad got sick. She's like family, and that's it. There's no subdivision, no trailer park, just a small little barn of menium.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions?
Y'all going to be using the same driveway that's already there? Are you going to have two driveways? Just one driveway?
Well, there's.
Well, yeah, the two that are already there, but you're not going to put a third in?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Would y'all have any concern with us just rezoning the two-acre part? Like where?
What does that entail? I mean. I'm probably going to put a house between her and my dad.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So then you might need to split it again.
There are no more questions? Is there a motion?
I'm ready to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second? For Mr. Brandon, all those in favor? We'll recommend approval to the county commissioners, July 1st, 5:30, this room. Item number four. John and Marie Honeycutt family, LLP, LLLP, has applied to rezone 51 of the 64.95 acres from Ag 5 to R-8 with his residential 8,000 square feet for the purpose of creating a single-family subdivision. The property is located on Highway 80 East, and Mr. Stephen Russian will be acting as agent. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This rezon request would be, or would allow for the creation of 134 single-family residential lots. Location would be between Statesboro and Brooklyn on Highway 80, generally speaking. The site plan as presented would show two access points on Hagan Lane. But as shown here, this is a property with its own zoning overlay. You have a highway commercial property that fronts US 80, and the remaining portion is Ag 5. So there'd be some rezoning, or proposed, has some rezoning of highway commercial to the R-8 and then Ag 5 to the R-8. Hagan Lane is a county-maintained dirt road. Of course, US 80 is a paved, state-maintained highway. And at some point in the future, I couldn't say if in the next decade or two or three, but Highway 80 would be four-lane, so, you know, the increase in traffic over time, it's, it will grow to become a corridor, as suggested in the comprehensive plan, whether you have commercial or residential or whatever. But there's also city water and sewer services being developed out to the area, which would allow for the R-8 designation. Otherwise, you'd have to rely on septic tanks, which would not work on 8,000 square foot Currently, the, the property is used for agricultural uses, and there's some wetlands on the property on the southern portion of, or southern boundary of the parcel. And the site, site plan that was submitted with this application shows the wetlands again on the southern boundary there. And that's, I guess, additionally, say that there is some passive park area, I guess, little pocket parks in the development. And with that, all right, well, let's see, this is the property, when we placed the sign on the, in preparation of today's meeting, and that's US 80 again, so. With the consideration of, of traffic, some other, some other items are included in the staff report, but we have a few conditions with the staff recommendation for approval.
Sir, I.
I'll turn it over to, back to you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Russian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, you may recall, I am Steve Rushing, attorney here in town. Been a little while. I am representing tonight the John and Marie Honeycutt family partnership. Its general partner is the Honeycutt Trust, and Jim Davis is the trustee. The limited partners is his wife and her sister. They're here tonight, but they've asked me to present this on their behalf. They've inherited this property from their parents, which. They've inherited this property from their parents, which who were John and Marie Honeycutt, who farmed it for years. Here with me to assist is Hayden Rollins, our engineer. The partnership does own this property, but they do desire to sell the property to be developed as a single-family detached neighborhood, as you see. It is located, as Mr. Pope stated, along Highway 80 East. We, our site plan does, did anticipate access solely onto Hagan Lane, which would involve some repaving. But I know one of the conditions has indicated possible access to Highway 80. That can certainly be worked out. We don't have an objection to that proposed condition. But I'm gonna let Mr. Rollins address that a little more. He's the engineer. We are requesting that 51 acres of our 65 acres be rezoned as R8, which is single-family residential. As Mr. Pope stated, it was pulling partly from the highway commercial zone to the north and then partially from the Ag 5 zone in the southern part of the tract. And again, this is only possible with connection to city water and sewer. And thankfully, City of Statesboro has plans to run that, their water and sewer along Burke Halter Road, just about 800 feet north of us. So that would mean no water wells on our tract, no septic tanks. But it is this project that brings us before you tonight. We're proposing to develop it with the 134 potential family home lots that you see in our site plan. There are some wetlands, as was indicated, but our plan stays out of those, so there should be no impact on wetlands. According to the GSI maps, there are no floodlands on the property we have to deal with, but we will have some proposed stormwater detention. Of course, that would filter out into the wetlands over time. As we continue our testing and engineering, we may not can get quite this many lots, but that's our, our proposal. As you can see, it also includes some green space in addition to those stormwater ponds. We assert that the standards of review that you have to go by for a rezone support our contemplated use. And the county staff did a great job, I think, in analyzing that in their report, whereby they did recommend approval with just those four conditions. We have reviewed all four conditions, and we have no objections to those if you choose to recommend those to the county. But the first standard addressed, of course, is the compatibility of the proposed use to the existing uses of adjacent or nearby property. And we have quite an assortment of those, actually. The property is bound on the west by some commercial property that fronts on Highway 80, and behind that is the Burke Town Development. That's a R3-zone residential development. Behind that, there are a couple of single-family residence parcels. There's a family farm just adjacent to that that abuts on the southern part of our property. We also have, the partnership, along with some other family members, owns another parcel, 16 acres that abuts our property. We're not involved in that one tonight. And then there's a mobile home park to our east. So we've got quite an assortment all the way around us. But we assert that our proposed use would not adversely impact these various uses surrounding us, nor would those uses adversely impact our proposed uses. We would obviously meet or exceed the county buffer requirements all the way around the property. And of course, we would revisit the accesses, depending upon whether this board and the Board of Commissioners direct Highway 80, direct access. The staff report does adequately address all of the other factors governing the grant of a rezone, which chiefly support our application. As you can see, and most importantly, this tract is within the county's future land use plan, the Smart Bullock 45, recently adopted, puts, names this area a suburban neighborhood character area, which does anticipate having R8 developments within it. So it is compatible with the existing uses and the existing zoning in the general area, particularly considering the Burke Town subdivision abutting us and the new planned pud development just northwest of us. One other item I'd like to mention is the, regarding the school system, given that discussion with a lot of these projects, this particular property is in the Brooklyn and Southeast Bullock school zones, but interestingly, it abuts two other school zones. It abuts the Sally Zittrower School District on the northwest side, and just 800 feet away at the intersection there is the Mill Creek School District. So you've actually got three different school districts very, either touching or abutting this property. So we assert that this development would be a good balance between the promotion of the public welfare and, of course, our own property owner's unrestricted use of the property. I think it's balancing it very well. I'm gonna ask Hayden to come up and, and address those technical matters, but before I sit down, on behalf of John and Marie Honeycutt Family Partnership, we would certainly request that you recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Hayden, there are two people signed up to speak before you. Would you rather wait to hear what they have to say, and then you can address those? There's actually one, yeah, there's about four, about four of them.
Legal order.
And, and bring you up again at the end, so you can address any questions they may have? Is that okay? Is that okay for this board?
Good.
All right. Then Ms. Deborah Hatton?
I'm not good at this. My name is Deborah Hatton, and I own the land adjacent to the Honeycutt property that is being proposed for a zoning change from Ag 5 to Ag 8. I, along with my family and others that have property, property in the immediate area, are opposed to this type of development for that area. So I would like to list concerns for you to consider before making your decision on the zoning change. The first is that we feel like 134 houses, 1,600 square-foot houses, so we understand, on that size of piece of property, it's way too many houses for the area. So that averages out to be, I guess, four homes per acre. Everyone in this area with the, this proposed subdivision, we're really wondering what that's gonna do to the value of our property, because I know they're, the Burke, whatever, I forget the name of that one is, that's, you know, right there, that, but anyway, this is very dense for that area. Number two is we're concerned with the water runoff from this development. There's a creek that runs behind my mother's house, and the water from the development will run to that creek, causing possible flooding issues and increased wetlands. So I have a picture of this, if there's any way to show it. We also feel like that this will take away acreage.
Ms. Hatton, he can go ahead and put that up there if you want to.
Will not be able to be used. Okay, so this is, oh, where you put it? Do it like this?
No, please. It's gonna be opposite of what you think.
Oh, okay. Can I put all of them up there?
Take a second.
Do you want me to go on while we're getting this?
Go ahead.
Don't take up too much time. So, let's see. The water will also move onto the property of others down the creek line, causing water issues for them. I know there were attainment ponds on the plan, but we're also wondering, just like was stated, it might runoff into the wetlands. Well, then, that's right in our yard, too. So to, from him saying that, it sounds to me like they're not sure that the retention ponds are gonna hold the water that might be coming, you know, from that. So, so if this happens, we're also wondering who will be responsible for the flooding, and is it the county? Is it the developer? Is it the previous owner? You know, that, we just don't know the answers to these, so that's why I was asking that. Number three is the traffic from the development. Oh, I guess I need to move these a little bit. These are the creeks that run behind my mother's house. And, well, just to show you that, and this was the last rain that we had, like, one day last week. This was the water that was back there. So there is a lot of water and a lot of drainage right there. And so if you get more coming down that road, it's only gonna bring more water into that area. So, okay, then on the traffic from the development, they're gonna use, according to the site plan that I was given, they're gonna use Hagan Lane, Hagan Lane as the entrance and the exit. And that road is not equipped to handle 250 cars. And I came up with that in that each home, if you think about it, most people have two cars. It's not just one. So the max, I guess, would probably be 250 cars that would come off on Hagan Lane, which is basically, it's not a real wide road. And I have documentation of that, too, where there are two trucks side by side that, as you can see, let's see, let me see, they barely can, the mirrors are meeting. So if anybody's on that road, you have to pull over and stop for somebody else to come by. It also does this when it's raining. In fact, our tenant that rents our barn pulls out, every time it rains, like the other night, he pulled out five people off the road, because the road up that way is so, such a mess. And this is another picture of it as well. So as you can see, the road is not fit for just the few cars that are on it right now, much less 250. So, that being said, and we feel, I've also heard that part of the road was gonna be paved. Well, a paved road sheds more water than a dirt road does. So that's an extra more, extra water that's gonna be coming down. Let's see. And right now, when you're trying to, when you're going down that road and you try to get out on 80, it's very hard to get out on 80 because of, you know, all the traffic. So it's only gonna get worse if you have 250 more cars coming out of that one little lane road. The other thing is the, about the Southeast Bullock school system, this, when I looked at the map, that piece of property is in the SEB school system. It didn't show anything about it being in Mill Creek or Sally's Zittrower that I saw. I may be mistaken about that. But the, but the one that I looked at, it said it was zoned Southeast Bullock. And, you know, once again, that was one of the reasons for denying the development on 119 at the last meeting. So I just wanted to bring that point up. And I guess there are some questions that maybe we have to ask them, you know, like what type homes are gonna be built in this proposal? There is a 25-foot buffer around the whole place except our property, and there's not a 25-foot buffer there. Doesn't show one at all. And it's built right up to the edge of the property. If you'll look at it, it's the cul-de-sac, and it's right there on top of the property. So those are the points of contention that we have about this development. It's just entirely too dense for what's available there. And us, along with, I won't name names, because I don't think that's right for me to do, but I have talked to everybody in our little neighborhood area right there, and everybody is opposed to this development. Some of them couldn't be here tonight, so, but they, anyway, I know I can say it, but I'd rather not with them not being here. So, but I guess that's all I needed to say.
There are others signed up? So Sam Lindley, you're next.
Hello, my name's Sam Lindley. I actually am the tenant of Deborah's. We live on the property that riders, Hagan Lane joins Josh Hagan. And we do actually have 10 horses, which I ride every morning, at least two or three, and I'm just concerned with, there's gonna be a huge increase in the traffic, because some of it's gonna try and get onto 80. The rest of it that's heading to the other side is gonna cut through Hagan Lane and go that way and bring you out on Burke Halter, because it'll be quicker than trying to get on 80, because where Hagan Lane comes out is right where that four-lane drops down to a two-lane. And even now, you're, you're sitting five, 10 minutes some mornings trying to get out. But I do ride all those dirt roads, and I'm just concerned, really from my point of view, if I'm out on horses, because it's normally early in the morning when everybody's going to work, and just the level of traffic is just gonna be quite a lot. Apart from that, I agree with everything that Deborah said, and I-
Okay, thank you. And then we have Cynthia Collins.
My name is Cynthia Collins, and that's my property there. I have a 50-acre farm directly across the street from this piece of parcel. And I can already tell you, it's taken me almost 10 minutes to get out of my driveway right now. As I stop to turn left into my property from Statesboro, I have nearly been rear-ended at least 50 times. My brother-in-law, instead of rear-ending him, they swerve around and spin their car around on Highway 80 in front of about 12 other cars. So the car traffic is going to be unbearable. But I can already tell you, with the changes that have been made with the small little subdivision there behind Catalyst Promotions, we're starting getting deluge of water coming through all of these drain pipes, right across next to my driveway, which you can see how it angles back. And that water coming down the road right now is flooding my horse barn. I have farm animals. I have goats. I have chickens. We're on almost 50 acres, and when that happens, my entire barn will stand in six inches of water, which means we have to change out shavings at $8 a bag times six stalls. I mean, it gets very expensive every time it rains. Not to mention, there is a six-acre pond, and then below that, there is also a quarter-acre pond. We fish. We bass fish. We have bream, bluegill, and all, and we're trying to pull food out of that. I don't know if that's gonna be safe any longer with the amount of, of traffic and chemicals that will be used during construction. It's not gonna be safe. It has already affected us drastically. You know, we are a small farm. I realize we're close to the city. We wanna stay that way. We wanna be left alone. We like our privacy. My husband and I live there, and I have two college kids that, you know, also live there. My son plans to, once he's done with school, he plans to have his home there. And, you know, it, this is the most insane condensed plat that I have ever seen to be put on such a tiny piece of land. It's not making any sense to me. We need to think about our community and what we want Bullock County to look like, and I sure hope it's not that.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Russian or Mr. Rollins, one of you gonna come up and address some of their concerns?
Good afternoon. Hayden Rollins, HUSG Bell. I'll try to be quick to address a few of those concerns, one of them being the buffers. We will have buffers around the entire property. The map was updated, but I don't think it was in time for this meeting, but there will be buffers around the perimeter, just like the ordinance states. On traffic, we'll work with the county and GDOT to determine where our access points are gonna be, what turn lanes are gonna be needed, but this, this road is planned for growth. As Mr. Pope stated, it is planned to be widened in the future. So it's a corridor that, that the state's planning for growth and the county, being that it fits a comprehensive plan. On water runoff, James, if you could go to the aerial, please? So right now, if you can look at that aerial, there's two pretty significant washouts. And if you look at the aerial back, I mean, in previous years, there's always pretty significant runoff issues in that field, going towards the Hatton's property and Highway 80. That runoff is unrestricted. It's got no filter. Other, I mean, it's, you're, any kind of big rain event is, runoff is just going straight over to either Highway 80 or the Hatton's property. What we'll be constructing is, our roads will have curb and gutter, storm drainage systems. There'll be almost five acres of pond, which equates for almost 5 million gallons of storage. So we feel that we have adequate capacity on the stormwater side. Any other questions that- Any other questions that the board may have?
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Rollins from this board?
I just wanna say, no matter which way the vote goes, I appreciate you coming here with a great drawing every time. I know you don't get enough thanks for that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hayden, how many gallons of runoff will be produced on the impervious?
So, by state law, uh, we can't be more than what is existing in the precondition. Uh, and, and as a precondition, we look at it as a clean row crop field with no crops. So, that's what we look at it, kind of a worst-case scenario. Um, and we will be better than that in the developed stage.
You don't know how many gallons you'd actually produce?
Uh, it'll be less than, than what's there currently. Uh, I mean, we'll, we'll have to nail into the, the detailed calculations, uh, later. And we'll work with county engineer to, to determine, uh, what those values are.
What you gonna do about school bus pickup?
Uh, school bus pickup, that'll be, uh, really determined by the school board on how they, how our accesses are gonna be. Uh, like Mr. Rushing stated, it's...
School system doesn't input how y'all design the roads and where they can be picked up.
Correct. We'll have...
200 kids could be at potential in this subdivision. If they're having to be picked up on Highway 80, that's gonna be horrible.
Sure. With, with a development this size, it's pretty standard to come to a centralized location. Uh, it would be, uh, not safe for them to pick up, uh, a lot of kids right along Highway 80, so...
If you use Hagan Lane, that's not gonna be that...
Well, i- if we use Hagan Lane as an access point, it will be developed to county standards. It'll be improved. It won't be a dirt road. Uh, it'll be paved, just like, uh, a lot of the nicer county roads.
You gotta turn around now.
Well, the, the school bus will be able to come through and, and use the roadway system if you go back to the, uh, plan view. So, the school bus could pre...
I worked in school transportation. I know how it is.
It could, uh, pull through. There's a common area right there showing in green at the very front of the subdivision. Uh, and they would have a loop and be very easy to come in and out of subdivision. In a safe manner. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Rollins?
I, I got one question. I'll vote more. I don't know which one you wanna answer. But it shows a negative impact over seven years of nearly $800,000, $760,000 of county.
Tax.
Why should taxpayers subsidize this subdivision over $100,000 a year?
I can let Mr. Rushing speak to that. But I, I will say that I'm not sure that I've seen a development come through that was in the positive. So, I'm not sure where those metrics, metrics has come from. But they also don't factor in the revenue that, uh, the tax revenue that those homes bring from, uh, uh, personal income. Uh, so, I'm not sure if those are factored in. I know the tax base is, is recognized. But these people work in Statesboro. They spend money in Statesboro, in Bullock County. So, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure where the metrics are made, but that would be my response.
All right. Mr. Rushen?
Yeah, I just added that, uh, what I, you know, we've said before, um, you, the Board of Commissioners doesn't have to look at any particular site. Because again, if you look at just at the subdivisions in, of the Bullock County, I don't think any of them will be in the positive under this metrics that is being used. But the Board of Commissioners looks at the whole county. That's why we have industrial use. We have commercial. Looking at all of that together, uh, provides, you know, enough funds, you know, that support all the residences that we have and, and will include the future residents. That's why we continue to have a, a good mixture of tax base in our county. It's why we're, uh, doing better than some of the counties that abud us that don't have that kind of mix that we do.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions? Do we have a motion then?
I make a motion to recommend denial.
A motion to recommend denial? Is there a second for Mr. Brandon? All those in favor of recommendation of denial? That's one, two. Is that unanimous? All those opposed? Um, that's unanimous. We're gonna recommend denial to the county commissioners July 1st, 5:30 in this building. Thank you. And if there's anyone who'd like to leave now, you're welcome to stay, but it'd be a good time if you do wish to leave.
I apologize for the interruption, but I wasn't able to get your time. Put my name down for proposal on the next item. If I could please be added to the list.
We have one person signed up. Can she add at this point? She got here late to sign up to speak for the next agenda item.
I'm not sure, uh, that's been...
It's not, it's never coming forward. Yes, that's not, um... I'm sorry that, I'm sorry that you weren't here in time. But no, we cannot allow you to add it after the fact. Thank you, but I'm sorry. All right. So, the next item on the agenda is ABA Development LLC has applied to rezone 50.13 acres from Ag 5 to R25, which is a 25,000-square lot for the purpose of creating a single-family subdivision. The property is located on Maria Sorrell Road. And Ms. Grace Wooton, Grace Wooton will be acting as the agent. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right. This rezon request is located generally, generally speaking, north of Statesboro to the west of Highway 301 on Maria Sorrell Road. Just on boundary of our, um, suburban neighborhood character area. And looking at property-specific zoning, you really have a mix of heavy industrial on the east, which on the east side, railroad tracks, um, which the rail line is an active rail line. Uh, the heavy industrial, um, I mean, it's an active zoning, but it has a, a previous, uh, use in industry, but it's not, uh, currently used industrial. Um, you have R25 subdivision to the west or on the other, opposite side of Maria Sorrell Road. Uh, and R25 just to the south of this, uh, development, which I believe was rezoned about 20 years ago. And then that off, that, uh, property owner also owns the light industrial and owns a, um, uh, site construction, site construction business. There's no manufacturing there. It's, um, site, uh, I don't wanna say materials, but traffic in and out, going to job sites and whatnot. But then the remaining Ag 5 property would be to the north. Currently, the property is used as agricultural, agricultural use. And this is a site plan that's provided by the applicant. And this is the property when we placed the sign on, on, on the property. Going back to site plan. Uh, staff recommends approval of the request with a few conditions contained in the report. With that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Ms. Wooton, if you'll come forward.
Hey, good evening. I'm Grace Wooton. I'm with Pape Dawson Engineers, which was formerly Maxwell Reddick. Um, I'm representing the agent for this rezon request and wanna start by thanking you, the commissioners, and the community for your time. Um, as mentioned, we're requesting a rezon to R25 for a proposed single-family residential neighborhood that complies with Bullock County's, uh, comprehensive land use plan as well as aligns with the existing surrounding land uses as, as we went over on the screen. Um, staff has recommended approval with conditions concerning tree canopy, playground addition, and conventional construction. And these are all conditions that we're happy to accept and comply with. And with that, I'm happy to address any of your questions or concerns.
Are there any questions for Ms. Wooton?
What's the plan for water for these?
For stormwater?
No, for, are they gonna be supplied by a single well or a community well?
Um, yes. Well, and then it's gonna be on subject as well.
Yestas? Individual wells or yestak community well?
Community well.
Community water system. If not, there is someone who has signed up to speak, so they may wanna call you back up, if you will. All right. Um, in opposition, Ms. Lisa Safely?
My name's Lisa Safely. I live at 241 Stillwater Drive, which is directly at the end of that point. Uh, there's a wetland, uh, running stream that runs through there that crosses our main road going into our subdivision. My main concerns are that, the fact that they're gonna place a bunch of rooftops on a hill that will run water straight into that. We've got two little culverts about that big that drain that whole hill now. Totally inadequate. Plus, we have a family of beavers in there. Uh, the railroad crossing up at the top, where Kyle Sorrell meets Maria Sorrell, that railroad crossing is in horrible shape. You cannot go over it faster than, than idle speed on your car, or you will die. Uh, there are no, there are no markings. There's no lights. There's no crossing anything. It says yield. And I almost kissed a train the other day going in there from the dump that's right up the road that is also horribly overused and horribly poorly maintained. Um, just generally speaking, the, the area doesn't support that. I heard them say that there's nothing on that land. There is a large concrete factory that's building culverts this big with very large tractor-trailer loads of debris and gravel and stuff for making concrete going in and out of one little road onto that property, which is destroying, uh, both Maria Sorrell and more on the railroad crossing. So, it's really, to put that many houses in there, there's gonna have to be some serious infrastructure considerations made in all of those three areas. And that's all I have to say.
All right. I thank you, this board.
I thank y'all very much for listening.
Are there any questions for either Ms. Safely or for Ms. Wooton concerning this subdivision, this rezon request? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, if not, do we have a motion? Okay, you wanna respond? Yeah, she's got time.
I was just gonna note, as far as the stormwater goes, I think Mr. Rollins with Husky G. Bell mentioned that per the state requirements were, we have to keep everything on-site. So, it should not affect the stormwater in any areas. Any runoff that would be created would be treated and held on site and infiltrated, uh, through stormwater ponds shown. Um, I wanna also note that the staff mentioned in their report that it doesn't negatively impact traffic sewer, waste, or water services. And that with the, it matches and aligns and complies with the comprehensive land plan, which is suburban neighborhood, which classifies and recommends two to four dwellings per acre. And what we are proposing is, uh, 1.3 dwellings per acre, which is significantly less than the, the, uh, comprehensive land plan mentions in general. And so, you know, we wanna respect the surrounding resources in agriculture, but also grow with the, the Bullock County plan. Thank you.
Question on the stormwater. You got your stormwater up at the corner. Where's it gonna go out of that stormwater pond?
So, it, that's a, it'll be a detention pond. So, it'll be held there and infiltrated.
If it runs out of detention pond, where does it go?
We show another stormwater pond down at the bottom. But we'll also have, you know, all of the...
I'm missing it.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. Over to the plan west of the site, there's another stormwater, large.
That's right there. But Ms. Safely said that, that down at the point, which adjoins her land, is where they get a lot of water. So, is there any plan to keep water from running there?
Correct. The state and the city, or, and the county will review all of the engineering plans and ensure that our site is up to compliance and does not run off the site onto neighbors' properties. Thank you.
With that being said, are there any more questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion of recommendation.
I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Is there a second? There's a second for Mr. Lane? All those in favor? That's one, two, three, four. All those opposed? One in opposition. All right. It carries. We will recommend approval to the county commissioner again on, um, July 1st, 5:30 in this room. All right. Thank you. We do have one more item on the agenda. So, thank you for coming. And if you quietly leave, that is fine. All right. The last item on the agenda tonight, Valnock LLC has submitted an application for a streetlight special tax district. The subdivision is located on Clifton Road and Anderson Cemetery Road. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this streetlight tax district is for, uh, 79 lots that are in Cornerstone Point. And just for reference, Cornerstone Point preliminary plans were approved, um, previously approved this year. And then the final plat was approved under a, uh, performance bond on June 5th, 2025. So, they're still, if you ride by the site, they're still, they haven't paved a road yet, but, uh, under performance bond. So, they're getting ready to go vertical with the homes. So, this being, uh, the streetlight district, we, we would take your recommendation and go to Board of Commissioners pretty much on the next, the next meeting.
Next meeting.
And for streetlight districts, as you, as you all know, uh, it would be paid. HOA would be taken out of paying the light bill. It would be on the property tax, or the property owners pay through their property tax bills. Um, and so, in that way, we ensure that the streetlights stay on for safety and, you know, the expectation of buying, uh, neighborhood with streetlights. It stays on in case, you never know, going down the future with HOAs. But, uh, this is the plan as provided by the, uh, let me make sure I get this right, this, this month. Uh, it is EMC. That would be the service provider. So, um, you know, the, the lighting plan, um, yeah, I, I think staff time is generally acceptable. Uh, we probably would work with the, uh, with the developer to make sure that the entryway is properly lighted or, you know, lit as required by ordinance. But, you know, there, there are a few dark spots there on, on the streets. But the, the lighting amounts were, you know, instead of directly under the light, there, it won't be like pitch, you know, just total darkness going down the road. It'll, um, so anyways, EMC feels there, they can meet what's previously been done, design-wise, so we're comfortable with it. And, um, with that, and it being a new subdivision, there was no public hearing required. And, um, we just recommend approval for this streetlight district.
If there are no questions, then you'll have a motion, a recommendation? All right. Movement first from Mr. Chandler, second from Mr. Lane. All those in favor? All right. We'll recommend approval to the county commissioners. Now, is there any other, um, business we need to attend before I ask for adjournment?
I have a question for James. This is gonna kinda sound joking, but it kinda ain't really. Um, it is my understanding that we're building that new fire station on 67 that they're gonna use the house for living quarters.
Correct.
How in the world can Bullock County build an accessory structure in the front yard of a house without coming up here and asking us for a variance? Because right now, there's a metal building going up directly in front of that house. That's a good answer.
You'll get back, you'll get back to us on that one?
I want the county commissioners to come forward this board and ask for a variance, is what I want.
I mean, every individual would have to do it.
Well, it's no longer a, it's no longer a, a house. So, it's just, use is a government building. And... building. And again, the single-family structure is just part of the firehouse, which, so there is no accessory and primary. It's all just one. It can have multiple buildings either way. So I guess the new building would be considered the primary, and the house is now the secondary, if you want to call it that. But...
Who was the government? They'd have been in. I don't think I could build a metal building in front of my house.
And get away with it.
You can't say I was going to go into it.
How is the government exempt from our ordinances?
I can do that at Ag 5.
You can put an accessory building in front of your home in Ag 5, yeah.
I did not know you could do that at Ag 5.
Now, they're, they were R-40. But again, being the county and it being a fire station...
I think I was going to do it, just...
Just...
Oh, Madam Chair, if I might, we sent out a reminder to you all, and I'm not sure how many may have seen it or responded already. But, and if you haven't, we appreciate it. But the zoning administrators conference, the summer conference, will be in August. I can't recall the dates off the top of my head, but just refer back to your emails and let us know something if you want to go, so we can go ahead and get you the hotel where the conference will be.
13th and 14th.
14th and 15th. Okay. So, yeah, we're going to go ahead and try and...
There are two hotels. So one, if you fill, the first fills up, the second hotel, you'll be walking to the meeting. So if you have plans to go...
Put me down. I want to go, and I don't want to walk.
So the quicker, registration opened up last week, and I think it'll fill up quickly. And I think we've already made reservations for Mr. Chandler, Mr. Bath, and me. So we'll add...
Add me.
And Mr. Brandon.
And then lastly, with, I don't think I announced it in the last month, last month, but Ms. Tremble, you know, she resigned from this board. And so I've notified the Board of Commissioners that we do have a vacancy and are currently taking applications to get new planning and zoning, or a new planning and zoning board member. I would just encourage you that if you know somebody that is willing to put in the time, as you all do, and go to conferences and everything else, and make the tough decisions, then encourage them to apply with Ms. Venus there. And I can get you the link, get you the link if you know of anybody. And I think we posted it on Facebook.
There it took. Yeah, there it took. Now, I have talked to the county chairman of the commission, asking him if it's possible to have an appointee before the, you know, in-service training in August, so that they can be there before they come to a meeting to have some training. And we'll see if that goes with time, if that, you know...
I certainly think it's possible. And I think we're trying to keep it open for about a month to, you know, see, to see who all...
Is there a way, is there a way to go ahead and reserve an extra hotel room on the property? And then we can always cancel beforehand, but to get room, I'd hate to put a new appointee in another hotel. So it'd be nice if we had one reserved that we could always cancel if necessary. But we can add it if they fill up.
We can do that.
Okay. And it's in Rome, Georgia, so it's quite a distance away.
I think that was, that was all. Next month, I'll have some text amendments to bring to the, bring to the board for your review. And I'll try and get that draft out to you probably at the end of this, well, at the end of this week. I think it's, we have a few minor changes to make. But anyway, just want to let you know about that.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I told you.
Got a motion and a second from the right hand of the gallery. All those in favor? All right, yeah. All right. This meeting is adjourned. We will...